All right, it's seven o'clock and we will call this meeting to order. We will take roll call when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Here.
Evly. Kettering. Michael.
Here.
Schultz. Weiss.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
We need to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there any corrections, additions? If not, I'd need a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second back.
I have a motion by Michael and a second by Hoffman. Roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evly. Michael.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, we can review the agenda. If there's no additions to the agenda or any changes, then I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion by Hoffman.
I'll second.
Second by Michael. We can just do all in favor of approval of the agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. All right, motion pass. Conflict of interest declarations. Any conflicts of interest? We can start on this end over here with Weiss.
No.
Michael?
No.
Barkle, no? Hoffman?
No.
Evly? All right. Onto the next agenda item. This would be... We have Kristi Schultz joining the meeting. Kristi, any conflicts of interest?
No, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the first agenda item, hearing for recommendation of Article Five ordinance changes to county commission. For this hearing, we will be doing public comment. If anybody would like to speak during public comment, please sign up at the tablet over there and I hope I will have Bill call you up when it's your turn. We will limit public comments to three minutes and... All right. If anybody else, there's more paper up there if you want to sign up. All right. Don, can you hear us? I don't think is quite on yet or... Okay. All right, so we can move on with public hearing. And first on the list.
Justin Boss.
Justin.
Oh. James, is it Elson?
All right, come on up to the podium.
Is this the talk box? I guess I want to talk about the trick.
No, this is for, this is for the hearing for the recommendation of Article Five. Later agenda items will be later.
Guy Larson, are you here for Article Five or yes?
All right, come on up. State your name and Bill, if you could keep time, or Gary?
My name, my name is Guy Larson and I'm here to recommend that you reject the rewrite of Article Five. Having read it, there are some good things about it and there are some bad things about it, but the special permit is a deal breaker for me. Having served on this commission for several years, you realize that no issue is cut and dried to the point where you can just hand out permits for them. Even the simplest thing on examination typically ends up more complicated than you think. And I think it's imperative that the public have a right to know what is being proposed and the ramifications and have an opportunity to weigh in and then have a board with, you know, more than one person involved to look at all of the documents and claims, whatever, and come up with a plan. I don't think just being able to secretly hand out a permit and have construction start on something and then have people up in arms because they had no idea what was going to happen, I just don't think it's a good idea. The citizens of Yankton have voted on issues involving Article Five on a number of occasions. And in every case, they've been fairly clear that they want regulations in place to protect them, whether it's voting for an ordinance or voting for county commissioners that they think are going to represent them, whether they end up or not representing them. But I would urge you to, you know, I realize that it's a painful process and you'd like to see the end of it. I think what you proposed to the county commission the first time was a better plan that they ultimately rejected. But I think you need to go back and rework it still once more. Thanks.
Thank you. Greetings. Jim Pearson, I've been a good taxpayer for public funds here in Yankton County for about 20 years. You could debate the good part, but I paid, have paid my taxes. So it's a privilege to speak and I want to thank all of you for your, your good work. I think Guy has, has given a pretty good summary. I too wish to speak as, as a taxpayer and citizen of this county to oppose the, the rewrite specifically because of the special permitting. I think it's, as Guy pointed out, I'm sure others have mentioned this to you, how vital it is to have our public input on, on any decision that, that is warranted, that comes before you. You, a good part of your job, as I understand it, is to work within the zoning ordinances. And, and as part of that is to gather the information, the best information that you can and, and then make your decisions accordingly. And as you also know, sometimes some good information, information you need to know, is held out in the public. And that public, those citizens have a right, have a right, and I'm sure you would agree, to, to weigh in and then you make your decisions accordingly. Just a quick example, I live on a high hill out in the Lake area. I would love to have a wind turbine on my property to help me with my electrical bills. But I would expect that I would go through the normal zoning regulations and would expect my neighbors to be able to have an opportunity to, to weigh in whether they thought it, it in any way hindered, hindered their rights as a citizen. So just in using that example, I again urge you to, no matter what it might be, the public needs to be involved as appropriate in the permitting process for any kind of measure that comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a Ron?
My name is Ron Lorenzen and I also live out in the country, but I, my thoughts on this are every time there's a decision on zoning, I think there has to be input from everybody because there's a lot of factors, especially if you're a homeowner, that you feel may affect you that may not be heard if you don't have open, an open forum and, you know, getting opinions from everybody. And I think Guy has explained this very well. I won't continue with it, but I think it's very important that we have a situation where people can give their, express their opinions and all sides are heard before decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Wilson. I actually live across the county line in Clay County, so I appreciate you letting me talk to you for a minute here. I'm a retired county commissioner from Yankton County and know what, what kinds of issues counties have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. It's not easy. I, I certainly learned one thing as a county commissioner, and that is that if you want a feud, try to cut people out of the decision-making process. It just doesn't work. We need to hear from all the people. And the, the problem I have with, with the special permitted, permitted uses is in your ordinance, as in ours, you have permitted uses and you have conditional uses. And that's wise. There are certain things that don't need to hold, have a hearing and have everybody weigh in on, but there are so many things that do need to have public input. And the problem I have with, with the special permitted uses is that this allows officials to designate particular kinds of uses and it's open-ended, where a permit can be issued by an unelected official without any, not only public hearing, but without public notice. And that's a recipe for hostility, for, for anger, for fighting. We don't really need that in our communities. We need harmony. We need to hear from people. And as, you know, as you probably know, this idea for special permitted uses came directly out of Senate Bill 157, which passed in the 2020 legislature, and it strictly directs that there'll be no public hearings and no public input, no public announcement, but it also limits who can, can appeal such a decision. So it's, it's just an undemocratic idea, I think. We all live here together in these counties. We all need to respect each other, work together, hear from each other, and the special permitted uses idea just doesn't meet those guidelines. So I appreciate if you would consider kicking that provision out. Thank you very much.
Hey guys, Dan Clemmish, county commissioner. I'm a fifth-generation farmer, a combat vet of multiple overseas tours of duty and a recipient of the Bronze Star for my actions in Iraq. And it breaks my heart that I am here in Yankton County seeing the erosions of the freedoms and rights that I fought for, for our country overseas. I'm very concerned about the special permitted uses and in particular Section 506. Permitted special uses have never been allowed in our zoning ordinance before and for good reason. It eliminates the public out of the process. If we adopt this, we'll be the first county that has done it. From what I've heard recently, Clay County looked into this and they unanimously rejected special permitted uses. They said, "We're not going to do them because it takes the public out of the process." Permitted special uses will effectively gut our zoning ordinance and it'll take you guys, our planning commission, out of the process. I've served on this board for many years and a lot of projects have come before us where we were able to work together, work with applicants and turn a project that wasn't perfect. We changed a few things and guess what? Everybody walked away and everybody was happy. Permitted special uses don't allow that because you will never see those permits. You guys were all elected because you're good, honest people. You want government transparency and so do I. But that won't be possible if we adopt special permitted uses. Also, we're heard that these special permitted uses will follow a checklist, but I have not seen that checklist yet and as far as I know, it doesn't exist. There's a quick and easy solution for this. Remove Section 506 and place those items either in as a permitted use or a conditional use. That way, the public can still have their notice with the conditional use. And I'm going to leave you guys with a quote from Ronald Reagan tonight. And he said, "That freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction." We don't pass it on to our children through the bloodstream, but it must be fought for and protected and handed on to the next generation to do the same. Or the day will come when we tell our children and our children's children what it was like in the United States once, where men used to be free. Please do not allow special permitted uses in our zoning. Thank you.
Gerald Nelson, do you want to speak on Article Five? Later.
Would you check the sheet back there in case anybody else signed up? Oh. All right, last chance to speak during public comment on the Article Five ordinance changes. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. And I guess, is there any further discussion by the board or I would entertain a motion?
Yes, there is further discussion. We've just heard from the public about how they feel about special permitted uses. I believe their concerns are valid and every single discussion that we've had about Article Five, I have brought this to the attention of the board and the county commission, and it has fallen on deaf ears. It takes the public out of the process. It takes, it pits neighbors against neighbors because they'll be building something that you have absolutely nothing, know nothing about. You've not been noticed. You've not been, had the opportunity to come to a hearing. You have absolutely no say in the matter. It's just granted and they're building and you are out of luck, Charlie. You have no recourse. That is not right. You're being denied due process. You're being denied the opportunity to have control over what goes on in your neighborhood. And, and maybe you'll be fine with it, or maybe you'll say, "Okay, all I want you to do is put in some trees." This is going to cause so much divisiveness among neighbors. If neighbors have the opportunity to talk it out, they can usually work it out. This takes everybody out of the process. The people that, that are, are building it, whatever it may be, they build it and you don't even know until its construction has begun. And by then, it's too late to do anything about it. But they've already taken away all your rights. You haven't had the right to a hearing. You haven't had a right to a notice. You, you are just out of the system. And no one knows what's going on. The planning commission doesn't know what's going on. The county commission has no, nothing to do with it. It's a bad idea on every level. So my proposal is to eliminate 506. Put single-family dwellings back in as a permitted use, the way they have always been, the way they are in every county in South Dakota. Two-family dwellings, if you want to move that to a conditional use, I'm fine with that. Dwellings as an additional farm dwelling in excess of one, move to a permitted use. We've always done that. That's in the ordinance right now. Manufactured homes should be a permitted use. They've always been allowed in ag. Animal feeding operations should be a conditional use because that is the way it has been written in our ordinance and it has been working. They should need a CUP. Concentrated animal feeding operations, again, should need a CUP. Agribusiness are allowed on lots no smaller than five acres. That's fine. And then they added something on there that they shouldn't be allowed to live on that piece of land. Okay? If you're a self-employed person and you bought a piece of land, why shouldn't you be allowed to live there next to your business? To me, that is just unreasonable, but that's my opinion. And Section 516 can just be deleted altogether. Section, excuse me, Section 1 can be deleted and Section 2 says an additional dwelling unit, by definition, is allowed within the farm set upon approval with the building permit application if it is to be occupied by other members of the family, and that is already in our ordinance. And number three says the zoning administrator may allow the construction of a single and multifamily dwelling units not in conformance with this provision, only on those lands organized in a 501D or nonprofit religious apostolic association. So what they're referring to is, is like the colonies. Okay, we've always allowed the colonies to live on, in A. Why wouldn't they be allowed to live in A? And that's my proposal. I mean, we have worked, worked on this ordinance a very long time and there are some things in there that I really like. There are some things in there that I don't like. And we have been working on compromise with this. This is just, it's a bad idea on every level and that's a no-go for me. So my proposal is to amend, accept the amendment to the ordinance with the exclusions that I just read that I all handed you. And that is to election, to eliminate Section 506 that has to do with special permitted uses. We can live with permitted uses and conditional use permits and everything will be just fine. So I'm going to put that in the form of a motion. I would like to make the motion that we accept the amendments to, to Section 5 with the exclusion of Section 506, special permitted uses, and also eliminate Section 516-1. We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the ordinance changes with the amendments cited by Kristi. I guess I think we were, we have it on the agenda as basically, and straight across, up and down, we've already gone over this and if we want to make more changes to it, then I believe that the motion should just be a straight reject of the ordinance as proposed. So you're, so to clarify, you're making a motion to reject ordinance changes as proposed in the packet.
No.
We cannot, we cannot entertain a motion to make these changes that you have presented here because they did not make it into the packet and...
This is a discussion that we make changes all the time that are a part of our ordinance. This is our job is to make changes.
Right, but we're doing a hearing for the recommendation of the ordinance changes as presented. And since the public did not get to see your changes that you are recommending now...
The public expressed the same concerns that I did.
The whole, this isn't all of Yankton County did not get to see the changes that you're proposing, just the people in this room have. So on that, I would entertain a motion, if you would like, a motion to reject the ordinance changes as proposed in the packet.
That is not my motion, sir. That is not my motion and I'm going to call the question.
All right. Is she checking right now? Okay. Well, while we wait for that, I'd like to address some of the concerns that were brought up. As far as this hindering the rights of people, as far as notice goes and input, this basically moves everything that's in Section 506 as a special permitted use, gets treated as a permitted use with the exception that it has requirements that are cited and referred to other sections. The housing, like single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, they get referred to Section 516 for new residence requirements. And the concentrated animal feeding operation expansion of 25% gets cited to Section 519 for the checklist as was presented earlier, that there is no checklist. There is, is Section 519. Everybody is able to read that. The animal feeding operations Class B pursuant to Section 519, Section 2 and Section 3, which is setbacks requirements and manure application requirements. These section, the animal feeding operations Class B, that does not include anything with liquid manure. So no deep pit hog or cattle barns. It doesn't apply to anything over 500 animal units. Largely, this commission or the county commission have not seen a request for animal feeding operations that are less than 500 animal units in the past. Largely, these go out as small cow-calf operation producers that basically go out and build or start up because there is no performance standards in the current ordinance for anything under those limits. Now, we are saying that they are permitted use as they've been treated in the past, but they're subject to these sections, 519, Section 2.
299 animal units without a permit.
And how many did you see between 299 and 500 come in for a permit other than a hog barn? Which, under this proposal, would still come in for a permit.
We're not just talking about CAFOs. We are talking about the whole idea and the whole premise of a special permitted use, which denies people their rights to a hearing.
So under those...
They are being denied due process.
Under those, under those circumstances, then we should also require a conditional use permit for single-family dwellings.
No, because single-family dwellings have always been a permitted use.
But maybe they shouldn't be.
Single-family dwellings are permitted use in every other county in this state.
They're not permitted use in a commercially zoned district or like, say, commercial district.
An ag is what we're talking about.
And a single-family dwelling affects ag businesses and ag operations just as much as you, everybody would like to claim that an ag operation affects a single-family dwelling.
So it's been stated that it's felt that Kristi's motion can move forward and you can either agree or disagree with that and, and then the county commission will have to act accordingly.
All right. So Kristi, your motion to clarify is to accept the Article Five ordinance change. Accept the Article 5 ordinance changes with your modifications. With your modifications that you've presented here.
Correct.
So we have a motion by Schultz, and I believe it was a second by Weiss. A vote. Yes would be to accept the changes as presented by Christie. And to recommend this on to the county commission. Vote nay would be to reject. Real call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
No.
Heavley.
Yes.
Kettering. Michael.
No.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
I'm going to say yes.
Do we have a four to one?
Four to two.
Well, Kettering's not here, and I'm abstaining.
There was two.
Two.
Oh, two, I'm sorry, Michael. Yep, so three to, one, two, three, four to two.
In favor.
In favor.
All right. Motion carries. All right, so I guess that would end our discussion on the recommendation of the Article 5 ordinance changes. And they will be recommended on to the county commission. As proposed with the modifications. Next agenda item. Jerry Minot, Bucks Properties, conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a campground with storage units along the north end. Of property in a lakeside commercial district per Article 11, Section 1107. Said property is legally described as Lot 11, Whitetail Run, in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter. Of section 16, T93 North, R56 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Is Jerry here to speak? Or any representative for Bucks Properties? Conditional use permit.
And I tried calling and got no answer, they knew they were supposed to be here tonight, so. I don't know if you want to move them back and see if he shows up.
Um, is anybody opposed to moving it to the end of the agenda? All right, we'll move that to the end of the agenda with the conditional use permit. Actually, let's move it before the plats. All right, next item. Sorry if I mispronounced your name, Brooke Mulock. Conditional use permit applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to mine and sand and gravel from. An agricultural district per Article 5, Section 507. Said property is legally described as the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, section 18. Township 94 North. Range 55 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Is Brooke or anybody else here to speak on this? Come on up, state your name for the record.
Justin Foss. And I work for Concrete Materials and we are proposing to open up this site. To basically get another gravel pit in the area. We're willing to hear what the public's got to say. We're willing to do our best to basically make this easy for everyone that's on board. We're willing to do dust control, we're willing to put up the correct signage. We have. Basically, I'm here to answer questions that maybe some other people have, I guess. That's kind of what I'm stating.
So this color map, that's, you have reference to that?
Yep.
Where would be the ingress and egress to the pit?
Basically. The pit location will be, you know, kind of by the half-mile line there with that, there's that highlighted of the 27 acres there. That's what we're thinking about. That's where we'd like to have it.
And would you build an access road to?
We basically, we basically come off 441st Street. And we would. There used to be that Panino, we used to go straight north there. And the roadbed's still there, we're willing to, we're going to clear the trees and basically create the, use the existing roadbed that's there and just put new gravel on top of it.
I guess, is that road currently, is that maintained by the county or anybody?
It's vacated.
Vacated? Okay.
I drove out there and that roadbed that you describe is basically a grassy knoll. I mean, there's, there's remnants of what used to be a road, but I don't. Remember that being an actual used road for decades. I grew, grew up in the general areas, the bus route that I rode used to go past that.
There is an existing roadbed there, I walked on the property, there's ditches on both sides.
How wide is it, do you know?
I would say 12 foot, give or take.
12 feet? So you're going to extend that to what then?
We're going to try to use it to where we would maybe extend it to where you could fit two trucks, but if there's not enough material there, we'll just continue, just use it as a single way. So basically, one comes in, loads out, one comes out.
Aren't there safety concerns with that?
Well.
How are you going to regulate it if, if, if it's, if it is a hilly area, I mean, how are they going to know if somebody is on the road already?
Basically, the way we could regulate that is just by using either radios, we could use either just, you know, just like an honor system. We generally know how many people are coming in and out of the pit during each day. So we were able to, I feel that we would be able to make it safe. It's not going to be a free-for-all of guys going 60 mile an hour down this road, down to get down to the pit.
Okay, but what about the, the private individual that isn't on your, you know, regular truck list that he won't have a radio? He just wants to come get a pickup load of gravel for doing something for his own driveway or?
We will make sure that you'll be able to maintain a great site distance, so where it's basically safe. We're not, we're going to have to make sure that. We're going to have to make sure that it's safer, not only the public, but the people that want to use the product in a way. Because if we can't maintain a safe going in and out of the pit, it doesn't look good on us, and it doesn't look good on anyone else that's involved with it.
So Gary, this, I guess, would you be able to clarify, is this a, this isn't a right of way or anything that the county is liable for, this would be basically like a private drive? Excuse me, sorry, um, let's hold off on that till a public comment for this. Just so we can get everybody on record, so we can hear it. And I guess. If I heard it right, it was dust control, what are you going to do with dust and noise control?
Basically, with dust control, we can do sodium chloride for the last half-mile, or we could just bring our water. We have a water truck on-site that we could use to just get rid of the dust. I mean. If it's a couple times a day, I mean, some days, it all depends on the pit traffic also. I mean, I've been, if, if the dust becomes a problem, we are going to try to do our best to make everything kosher for the public.
And how about noise?
Noise control? With it being so far out, I really don't think there's going to be much noise besides just normal, I mean. It's not like this pit's going to be running, crushing 24 hours a day, we're going to have basically a crushing season. So basically, we'll go out and mine, and what we do is we'll put up a certain amount. And you'll probably, it depends on the amount of gravel crush, it could last anywhere between one to maybe three weeks. And once we have the pile, the only noise that you'll have is just a normal front-end loader loading a truck, that's it.
How, what's the closest neighbor, I guess, or residents to the pit proposed site?
I would say would be probably Darrell Nelson would be the closest. And that would, he would just basically field the driveway there. And, but I don't think the noise is going to be personally, I don't think it's going to be no different than any other agriculture type equipment that's ran in the area.
What about the access, I guess, you know, you're talking 441st Street?
Yeah.
But what about 306?
So like 306, basically, I mean. We will. Our goal is basically, so if someone comes in out of, out north of town, they're going to come off 81, more than likely will probably turn on 306. Okay, at that intersection, it's a better intersection than what our current location is. I mean, you got a good site visibility, and then we will be able to maintain up that to the pit driveway. To a certain extent, we're willing to work with the county township or with the citizens on just making sure that we're able to maintain that. Because if that road, not only if that road goes bad. It looks bad on us, but then we want to make sure that if we do this again, that we have the public support. If we wanted to open up a different site, I guess.
I think the issue becomes a couple years ago when everything was so soft, that road completely went to hell.
Now.
Get in and out of there. On 306 between Highway 81 and Nelson's and then north, or east on that road. With the amount of truck traffic that goes out of the Velik pit. Right now, with what, 10,000 loads last year? Roughly? On a gravel road, and that's an asphalt road? I mean, you're looking at major damage to those roads, depending upon what the weather conditions are.
If the weather conditions are too wet, we'll just, we cannot accept to have traffic in there, because for one, it ain't going to do us any good if, if we're running trucks in and out of there and beating up the road. We will have to go out and maintain it, but at the same sense, we can't ruin the road, because if we ruin the road, then how is the public going to get anywhere? How are we going to get trucks back in the pit? So we have to work together and just make sure that even if it's a wet conditions, we're not going to load trucks. And if it's sinking out of sight, we have to do our due diligence to keep this road maintained, because we're not the only ones using it.
I have another question, does, I'm looking at your map here, does your mining site cross the Beaver Creek?
No.
Okay, so you won't be digging up the creek bed?
No.
Or running into the creek bed?
Or spilling over into the creek bed?
No. We don't plan on.
Do you have any measures in place to prevent that from happening, or do you, have you thought about that?
Yeah, so if we.
Kind of barrier or something?
We'll basically build like a high wall.
Okay.
And make, you know, like if anyone's been out to the Velik pit, you notice that we have high walls and we have barriers for that, for just that reason. Because also on the Velik site, there's also a creek that runs there too. So we have to build those high walls to prevent like basically any, we cannot put anything back into the creek that doesn't, you know.
Isn't there already?
Bingo.
This is a floodplain also, correct?
This?
Yeah.
That Beaver Creek area.
That Beaver Creek flood.
Because when the Velik pit went underwater. Couple years ago, or two years ago, three years ago, that was all, the whole pit was full. And this all, that all brings through this.
Now, I'm going to bring Brooke up to explain, she, she works more with the floodplain portion of this.
Hi, my name is Brooke Mulock, I'm the environmental manager with Concrete Materials. And with the floodplains and how the flowage of the area and everything like that. We are aware that there is some area, not a lot, just some area is on the north end of.
Bill, could you point it up on beacon and actually put the floodplain filter on?
There, I think I put it in your packet. Part of the application, it shows that just the very north edge of where they drew skirts, just a little bit of that floodplain.
Yeah. So from talking with Justin, we. Our mining extensions in that area will be kind of a burned area, correct?
Yes.
So we don't have any intentions of mining in that floodplain area. We gave you a boundary of where our site will be located, however, from there, we are protecting that Beaver Creek as much as possible, because we do see it as a natural resource and a sensitive resource as well.
Would you consider maintaining the 306th all the way down to Southwest Jim River Road? Because I can see a lot of trucks coming in off that oil, if they're on the other side, you know, of that. If they're east of Highway 81, they're going to come in from that direction. You follow me?
Yeah, um. I guess if they're coming from the east there, what's the difference if they were. Going to any other location throughout that, because there's also another gravel pit down that road. Right on the Jim River Road.
Going up a gravel road and a hill and tearing up that hill.
Well, I don't think you would be able to get a truck up that hill. I mean, that's a pretty steep grade coming up there, and if you're coming, if. If you're coming down, you'll be turning and you, you'll have to really get that thing to crawl to get it up to the top. I mean, we're one.
But they could still go down that hill. Just gear down and go down, and then they're fully loaded. And they could turn north right onto the gravel.
But then they couldn't get over any of the bridges.
Would you object to a haul route restriction, meaning that they can only go? West to 81 to get in and out?
No. We would be fine if we could get, have a haul route, but the only thing is, we can't, doesn't, how, how do you, the haul right? The haul route that is designated, how do we regulate that even more?
That's, that's the, that's the trucks that matter. Is they're not going to have high patrolmen there watching to make sure that they take the proper haul, haul route that's designated.
I mean, personally for me, I would like them to go out towards 81. But I can't.
Can't guarantee.
Yeah.
Is there going to be any utilities or anything brought into the location?
No. I think there's existing power there. There's an old well there, but I honestly think if we would have to do, do anything, we might have to put, upgrade the power. Because I don't know what's at the post there.
Yeah, I think that was just to pump water out for an artesian well, for a well for livestock, so it probably isn't. Really too heavy duty there.
Will there be any refuse or service areas or any signage put up?
If that's something that you guys want, we will put up the signage. Or reach out to the county to see what proper signage we need to have, if we got to put a truck crossing or just turning trucks here or whatever signage that's needed, we will put them up.
Would this property have any like gates or something to block access during off-hours or?
Yes. Yes.
I know in the past when we had commercial businesses and, and. Gravel pits and even a heavy hauler, we had a road maintenance agreement with them. So that might not be a bad idea.
We're willing to work.
The road, if the road is maintained well, then, then, you know, the neighborhood. The road, if the road is maintained well, then, then, you know, the neighbors will be happy and you'll be happy. The county will be happy because we won't be incurring more costs. To maintain the road due to the, due to the increased traffic.
Because it is a township road.
Right, the township would be. Bear the, to bear the brunt of that.
Not trash piles?
No. Will have like dumpsters, but that's just common trash, I mean, nothing.
Nothing to blow around and.
Not that. Mainly what we'll probably do is we'll strip the top soil off and then we'll bring in like a single stage crusher. And you'll just work and then you'll crush, just get a pile, get your pile built, we'll put a scale there and it'll just run in and out, there should be no trash.
No pop bottles or?
Hold on, I mean, I can't. Can't guarantee, but if, we will keep the site clean. Just for the fact that, I mean, I personally, I don't like a dirty site, so if you're gonna sit there, if. I wouldn't want someone to throw trash on my lawn, why would I expect? You know, just in the community, why would you expect to have someone just like, oh, well, that's not my pop, that was not my concern. But it is my concern because fortunately, when I'm on that site, I am in charge of what goes on, so I like to keep a clean site. There will not be any trash, if there is trash, you can call me and I'll pick it up myself.
I think the biggest issue is whether to access. With the roads. I know before I could even make any kind of inkling of a decision on one another, I could need to see some kind of haul route. Some kind of a. Something is gonna happen to the road because I know what that road, how bad that road is, I travel a lot. As bad as it was back a couple of years ago during the flood and that spring. And then it's, it's a construction site a lot like. The grain elevator, the Napa. Where. You can have haul route, you can build them a concrete highway to it. But a lot of the trucks don't go that way. I mean, the Tabor oil, the four thirty six gravel off of that, they even put. Mesh down on that to hold it, now the mesh is coming up through the road because the trucks are all going that way because it's quicker to get out of there than it is to go five miles out of your way. And they'll do the same thing on this deal, no matter what kind of a. Process you do. I think that to me, the, the big sticker of the whole thing is access in and out. And the road. I gotta see some. Something more. Concrete because of. What, and I understand what you're doing there and everybody needs gravel, but. In order for you to make that work, it needs to be. Accessible. Anybody else, I'm not worried about trash blowing around because your site, I travel past your site. Every day and it's. There's no mess, it's cleaner than it ever was as far as I was concerned, I've lived there my whole life, so it's. That is a problem, but the issue becomes. Access, the people that are on that road. The dust, the road isn't very wide. And the general nature of a lot of truck drivers is not very conducive to narrow roads and dust.
Is there any way we could put a, a speed limit on there? And we'll make it forty miles an hour because I mean, that is a very narrow road and when a. Semi trucks going, you know, fifty, sixty miles an hour, it's only a mile and a half, they should be able to handle driving forty miles an hour from mile and a half. There's so much dust, you won't even be able to see where you're driving.
It's a township road, so I don't know if we actually, if we actually have authority over that.
Well.
Road.
We maybe don't, but the highway superintendent would.
It's a township. It's township.
Township.
Then you get into the culverts that go underneath the road down through that big drainage area, you're all pretty well shot. So, and the road's not very wide and to widen that, I mean, you're talking major dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Rebuilding that grade and getting that done and. Make some kind of a surface on that road that's not going to. Crush problems.
Yeah, I, I guess I agree and I'd like to see some kind of road agreement with like township since they're the ones that are involved with the. With this road and. We could see some plan with them and agreement between township involved. I think I'd feel more comfortable going forward with that too.
Cause I see safety as a huge concern. I really do.
Yeah, so is, if you have any other comments?
I have no comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to public comment now for the conditional use permit. For sanding gravel mining in an ex own district, is there anybody wish to speak? Come on up and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Lauren Nelson and I live, will be, will, I live southeast of where this proposed gravel site is. And I have to agree with you, my concern is the, is the safety aspect of it. I've lived in that location now for twenty some plus years. And, you know, people talk about a highway fifty bypass, three oh six street is it? Just today, I kind of made a mental note and this is just randomly looking out and catching people going by, I, I caught two gravel trucks. Probably going down to the south, going by my house, a feeding South Dakota truck. A military vehicle of some sort going to get gravel, people, you know. Landscapers, designers going down with their little, you know, vehicles. It's, it's a very busy road. And as you know, like you were saying, two years ago, that was a mess. And, and when it became a mess, it didn't take very much, I think there was just one gravel truck that went through and pretty much that was it, it was done for. And it was a mess for a long time, and so, like I said, just, just safety and how heavily traveled it is. And again, when you get closer to eighty one from our corner, it does get very narrow there through those trees down in there and. You know, if you're try, if you got trucks going, plus just your normal, you know. Trap, you know, travel that we see the vehicles. It's gonna, it's, it's a concern, it's a, a safety concern, so I just, I hope that you will, you know, take that into consideration and. You know, just make sure that safety is something you really think about when you think about this proposal.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would wish to comment? Come on up, state your name for the record.
I'm James Ellison. I. My wife and I own a parallelogram that's to the east of this pit. The water, the groundwater flows, you know, with the creek. And my only. Access to water is my well. I'm very concerned about disturbing the ground above this. Maybe a crushing operation isn't as bad, but if they ever decide to start washing gravel. That murky water will not be washed out by the sand. And I can see. Me having a bad well and I don't know any way to be able to be made whole. I'm about three thousand feet from the thing from what I can measure. Generally. Or how she can see, it's right on the edge of that. The back edge of that parallelogram. The prevailing wind, we're gonna have a lot of dirt and also noise is gonna be a. Kind of a bad deal, but, you know, that's. Some of the lithium in the country, but. I guess I'm most concerned. Of my well, digging in, in that area, what's gonna happen with the ground? And. You know, how we, how we would. Deal with that. And also the roads, I mean, that's, I don't think those roads can handle much more truck traffic. And it's loaded semis go up that road all the time, up three oh six, even in the winter, they've been stuck on it, so, I mean. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Come on up.
Gerald Nelson, I also live on three oh six street. I'm kind of in shock here, I was expecting from Knife River, a much larger. Operation here, now they're talking about sliding up a little narrow road and pulling some gravel out of there. And, but the one thing that strikes me is this could grow into a larger operation, if you look at the numbers, I got these numbers from South Dakota DNR. Their peak year was in nineteen, from March nineteen to March of twenty. Out of the velik pit, they pulled three hundred and twenty-five thousand tons, if you use twenty-five tons of load, that's roughly thirteen thousand loads. And there's no way our roads. Can take that kind of a punishment, but like I say, this pit could grow into something much bigger. But the more alarming number that I see. Is the growth that they've had over the last eight or nine years, they're at two and a half times the volume they were ten years ago. And, and speaking to Mike Erickson at South Dakota DNR. There's very little control coming from DNR on these gravel or mines. The only thing they're required to do is file a notice of intent. Which does not even allow for public commentary, it's just a. Formality and a, and a permit, so. So they also told me that very little regulation comes down from South Dakota DNR regarding. Environmental issues, so that would have to come from your local planning and zoning. Any rules that would have to be enforced. Like I say, the biggest fear I have is this growing into something much larger. And you try to put two-way traffic down three oh six street. And you get a big haul going or big contract going, because I, I live across the road from a truck stop and there's been times I've seen. The trucks parked there overnight and they're all lined up, a couple of years ago, there was a big windmill project in Nebraska. And the trucks just go continuous. Three oh six street and three oh seventh or Panina for that matter are not that good a roads. I live a quarter mile east of highway eighty one, feed livestock. And we cannot tolerate a bad road. In the spring of nineteen. We dumped approximately nine thousand dollars worth of rock and gravel. Between our mailbox and highway eighty one to try and maintain our road. So I could get livestock out and feed in. And that wasn't the first time, it was about nineteen ninety-three, the road broke down. Right. West of our mailbox. And we were literally trapped in our place and that was from gravel haul traffic. And the other problem with the trees is they, takes forever for the frost to go out. Highway, or excuse me. Three oh six street has got lots of problems. We've got a culvert that's questionable right now. The REA has a large power line buried in that road. For approximate distance of fifteen hundred feet. And if you let these gravel trucks beat down to that, that's dangerous spot, there's places that. Power line might only be two and a half foot deep. The entrance he's talking about off of Panina, I would not call a good entrance. It sits at about eight percent, eight to ten percent slope. And it. And he's, northbound traffic has horrible visibility to the east, you can hardly see to the east. And if you start turning traffic in there. Northbound traffic in and out of there, there's some blind spots there, there could be an accident, so. I brought along a few pictures. From nineteen ninety-three and. To show you what happened here and it's not all that far from your proposed entrance. And. We had some. Two to three foot deep ruts in the road, just pass them down here, sure, see? And I guess here's a picture of that. Power line when they replaced the culvert to show you how shallow it is.
One question I had for you, you said that the power line runs down the middle of the road or?
Yes, there's no place for it in the right of way, it's been there for fifty years, I believe it's been replaced once. It gives these guys the fits when they try and replace the culverts, we've replaced. Two of them in the last three or four years, I believe. So. I guess that's all I have right now, so, thanks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
Thank you, my name's Micah Lichness, my family and I are the closest to the gravel pit. We actually live about five hundred yards straight west of it and slightly south. Currently, we sit over the top of Poverty Valley looking at the valley and I have big concerns for. The noise control for sure, when they said they're gonna be crushing rock for three to four weeks and then also wind and everything else. Cause it goes from where it is now to looking out at a huge gravel pit and for a month out of the year, you have rock crushing and everything else going on. Concerned also, they said they'd build up a ramp and keep things out of the creek, but that's flooded multiple times in the eight years that we've lived there. That whole kind of bottom has flooded several times, so from a. Conservation perspective and keeping water quality in Beaver Creek, which flows into the James, half a mile downstream. I think there's concerns that need to be addressed there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Alan Ferris, I live at the corner of highway eighty one and three hundred and sixth street and I will completely agree, the road is not very good. Just in the forty yards from eighty one to my driveway, we have had years where there are ruts and we can't get in. There's currently a huge hole there that's been there for what, two years and we dumped stuff in there, but it comes right back because gravel trucks keep knocking it out regularly. He talked about sodium chloride to keep the dust down and they did that, what, three or four years ago when there was another road project and a lot of traffic was going. And it still creates a dust, but it's a very fine oily dust and it's just worse than regular dust as far as getting it off your car and your furniture and your lawn. And so that dust control, it's nice, but it's not great, also the trucks coming in from the south when they turn to go with the empties. They're always going fast and they almost come across and hit my mailbox, and so speed is a huge issue also for traffic on that road. So yeah, safety is a concern.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to comment?
I represent Mission Hill Township North where this project is located, I guess my question is to you, that section line that you proposed to go down off north Panina, is that open or closed at this time? Is it a section line?
I think it's just a section line, I think it's closed, I mean.
Yeah, I can't find out an answer from anybody, so that's, I guess we gotta start there and find out is it open or closed and we have to go through a process. To open it back up, because if it is closed by the township, it comes back to the township. For them to make the decision, so I guess we gotta start somewhere. I guess that's what I have.
So if it's, excuse me, if it's vacated, then it belongs back, back to the owner or to the township?
Well, if it's closed, it could always, it remains the township's, but it can be reopened. Was it ever vacated and somebody personally owns it now, deeded to them? I don't know, I can't find an answer out to that, I need to have an answer for that, I don't, you guys know?
Should be recorded, that register needs if there was, if it was vacated.
Right, is it gonna tell us if it's open or closed?
Probably not.
Vacated, it was back, it was back to the owner.
Yeah, see, I don't. Well, the township can. You can close a road in the township and you can also just make it a minimum maintenance or close it for the public access, but it doesn't revert back to the landowners. It stays the township.
But if it's vacated then.
So, right, I don't know, that's what I need to have.
All right. All right, anybody else? All right, come on up, state your name for the record.
I am Joyce Bogatz and we live in Poverty Valley just below Micah and his wife. I am Joyce Bogatz, and we live in Poverty Valley, just below Micah and his wife. So we're just like twenty-two hundred feet from the site. We purchased our property in twenty-twelve, so we've lived there quite a while. And yes, we live on a dirt highway, on a dirt driveway. And we've been flooded through a couple of different times where we live, not our home, but our road. And we've put a lot of money, along with Micah and his wife, have put a lot of money on our road to keep our road good. And like everybody that lives in the country and on dirt roads, we know that in the spring and in the fall, you cannot drive heavy equipment or heavy trucks on the roads because of the frost, and it is going to bottom out, and it is going to cause a lot of damage to the roads. I don't care what anybody says, you guys are not going to be able to maintain that road and make that 306 wide enough for your big trucks and myself to get down that road, because it's not that wide now. Because when I come down that road and slow east trucks are coming up that road, I can't get by. And I get a cracked windshield every damn time. Because they're going so damn fast, even if I come to a stop, I get a cracked windshield. And can't get their, can't get their license plate because it's going so fast. You think I can call up to their shop and get somebody to fuss up or for them to pay for a windshield? No. That's a problem, and that's not going to get any better with your company saying this, that, or the other thing. I bought my property for the view. And what you guys are going to do to it is going to totally destroy it. It's going to ruin my property value because what you're going to do to it, what are you guys going to do when you're done getting gravel out of that pit? What are you guys going to do to make it look pretty again? What can you tell me? What are you going to do? Nothing.
I will give them a chance to come back up and address some of these.
Yeah, let them address that, can you? That's my concern. What are you going to do once you make a big old hole?
Okay, thank you. All right. Is anybody? If there's anybody else for public comment, I would entertain that. Otherwise, I will give them a few minutes here just to address a couple of the concerns. Make it brief. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, I'll give you guys three minutes to to address some of these concerns and then we'll move on.
Once we're done, we have to reclaim it. So basically, when we reclaim it, we, if we had the outside perimeter, if we had the high walls, we get it sloped gradually down, and then we'll put topsail back on so they can use it as just a pasture. So if you have this hole in the ground, we'll taper the sides to make it look like a gradual. It'll basically, it would be no different, different if there, you would be looking at the big stock dam if it fell, filled up with water. If not, they'll be able to turn it back into cattle pasture. Now with concerns with rock chips, I see that, but you can get rock chips on any road, by any car, by any truck. I'm not saying that it doesn't, it won't happen more frequently, but I can be driving down the road and I can meet just a Toyota Corolla and I could get a rock chip. I mean, if we work together and if, how about do we do that speed limit of forty-five mile an hour? And we make it safe, we will do in our best interest to control the drivers that come in and out of there. Because our main concern is safety. We don't want anything bad to happen on that road, because that does not look good for us as a company, and it doesn't, it's not good for the public. That's how I feel on that. Do you have anything, Brooke?
As a part of Concrete Materials, we have the four core values: people, safety, quality, environment. Our safety is our number one of our four core values. We are very concerned about the public safety and making sure that we are all aware of what is available to us as safety resources, as well as we want to make sure that all the citizens in the area, as they are customers to us, no matter what happens, if you're driving on a road, that gravel comes from somewhere. We are all customers for gravel and for everyone in this community. Next, I would like to also address the environmental concerns. As a person has previously mentioned, they talked to Mike Erickson, who is in charge of the air quality sides of things. He is also in charge of the sand and gravel mining for the state of South Dakota, for the Department of Agricultural and Natural Resources. They have just recently changed their acronym. For what I do for my career, I ensure that we have the appropriate environmental compliance in place. This environmental compliance for this pit is industrial stormwater permitting. We also have the notice of intent for mining. We also have been doing archaeological research for the site as well. We've done a records request for that. For this, we have more than what I have seen on this site for opening up a gravel pit than I have seen in other states that I work in. I operate for Iowa, Nebraska, and South Dakota, and part of Minnesota. When it comes to any sort of stormwater pollution prevention, we are on it. We make sure that we maintain that we, any sort of stormwater discharge that may end up in the Beaver Creek, we make sure that we, that river, that water is leaving the site as clean and pristine as possible. And typically, what that means is we will hold water on site if we need to, to make sure that it can either infiltrate or evaporate.
Are you planning on having a sandwashing operation?
From my understanding, at this point in time, we are not. If we do, or if we're anything like that, then we go through the due diligence process at the state level for that.
So if you did decide to do that, then you would have to put in a deep well, would you? A large capacity well?
So for the state of South Dakota, we would have to go through the water rights permitting process. That water rights permitting process requires any well that is over twenty-five gallons per minute for drawing up, which is any sort of well you find in the area, really. And at that point, we also ensure that we send in the paperwork, show where the drillers planning on putting that well. And then the state then does their research with the hydrolog, cannot speak today, hydrologic study.
But at this point, that's not in your plan?
No. Any other environmental concerns from the board?
I'm not sure the pits across the road from you were existing now that pit for one, and then Mark Works' pit across the road. It seems that for why, I don't know, but the creek, the creek that runs through there, which is Beaver Creek, the water is higher than the bottom of the pit.
You're talking like this? It all depends.
The only time that they're ever, the water on the, on the north side of the road has ever gotten into that pit was when we had that big flood and it broke through the dike.
You're talking to the thousand nineteen?
Bugged the dike up and pumped it back out, but the creek runs water all the time. But no, no surface water comes up in that pit down there. And I've never seen surface water in that pit on the Bellic pit site where you're at now until a big flood a couple of years ago, when it blew out the wall going through the, around the creek where the dike didn't hold. And filled it, floated the scale shack up to the west or to the south and put it on the bank. But I've never, you know, as far as surface water, and I'm not sure if that site where they're proposing now, if it works the same way, it's an odd, I mean, I don't understand why the water stays up here and there's nothing, no surface water down in the pit hole.
Is that your question?
Twenty-five feet deeper than what the bottom of the creek is, right next to it.
So what you're asking here is the creek's here, the pit is here.
Yeah, the bottom of the pit is deeper than the creek. So I don't know if that has anything. If there's an, why it would be that way, but that's the way it is.
It could be for a variety of reasons. A lot of times when surface water infiltrates into the ground, as it does, there's levels that it has to go through and everything and formations and whatnot. So I'm assuming that it has to go through kind of a U cycle almost. That is the only thing I can think of, sir.
They plugged it back up and the water went away.
Disappeared.
It soaked back down through the gravel, but how come that can run up here and not down there? But I don't, I don't know. I, that site down there, there's gravel all along that bottom with the two pipelines that go in there. I have farmed down in there before when they erupted one of the lines and they were digging it out, they're digging in here gravel. So it's there.
The pipeline is going through. Okay.
So then right now, where that pipeline goes through, we are right now just proposing that twenty-seven acres. And we, as of right now, we are not planning on moving towards that pipeline for just. I mean, you can't, I mean, you have to have so much clearance. And if you're crossing the lines, I mean, you got to put so much on top just to cross them. And I mean, I personally think we would stay away from that just for that reason.
Does that line come out about like where the road though? Where the pipeline comes up across 306? Is that?
The pipeline crosses 306 on the highest spot.
Is it on the east side of David's House though, or is it on?
No, no, it's about halfway between here. I've got one question here. Do you have any idea how much you intend to mine a year out of that? Do you get any expectation?
As of right now, no. I mean, we would like to put up a pile anywhere between fifteen to forty thousand tons. We might do a little bit more. Right now, we're just trying to just have a valuable resource just to stay in the county and be able to service everybody because there's not a lot of gravel around.
Are you going to scale it down there or scale it through a loader?
We'll, we'll actually put up just a portable scale and we'll just run it across there. So basically, all the portable scale, all you would have to do is we come in and we put like those monster blocks down, and you get your power, you come in and got the portable scale, we'll put our wave locks in, and then all of a sudden, you just set it down and you'll build two ramps to it. They'll come in with a tear weight, and we'll just, you might have a Jod's shack trailer there, or you could almost do it just on a, if you wanted, you could get like just a nine by twelve shed, as long as you had a control box in there and a computer, basically, you have power, you can run all that scale just from that little location.
I guess you didn't get to see my picture.
No.
Before you enter into a road haul agreement around here, are you sure you want to pay for fixing the road and have somebody else come along and tear it up? Because this was the results of two years ago. You could put yourself in a spot too there. There are a thousand miles of nineteen on the sideways side, just get back toward the farm through a road shop.
I mean, we're going to do our best. I mean, I'm not going to say that we're not going to just throw it out and be like, well, this is not our thing to deal with. But if we can come up with a haul route, road, route agreement and do our due diligence to help the county and the townships, we're willing to do that.
All right, I think we've gone over that. So I think we're done with that unless there's anything from the board. Okay. And I guess I would feel more comfortable if there was one of these agreements gone through with township, road haul agreement, addressing some of the issues, speed, road maintenance, building up of the road to handle the traffic and the different issues with all of that.
Well, we don't even know if the road is vacated.
Right.
We don't even know the status of their, their, their basic driveway into the facility off of 306.
So for those reasons, I guess I would feel more comfortable either tabling this to a later future meeting. I don't know if, is it a month enough for the township and everybody to get together to figure that out or longer, I guess. Can we table it without a definite date, Gary, so that they can come back and put this before us again at a later date?
Shows your progress. I mean, it's just like you say, the first, I did agree the first issue you have to determine who owns the road. I mean, if the road, the property's vacant, and I know that when I was on the Utica Township Board, the road that goes off of Highway eighty-one should be 301 to the west had been not even abandoned, but when somebody decided they wanted to put a house there, it came to the township, but we had to pay for building the road back up to standard, so it became a burden on the township. That went for one person to move a half mile back in there. So in this case, where that road is even worse shape than that one was, ownership of the road has to be determined before anything.
So are you going to put that in front of a motion?
I make a motion to table the request and tell more information will come next month or whenever.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Michael and a second by Schultz. We'll take a roll call vote on the motion when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavley?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes. Can we get him the phone number for the township people so he can start that process?
I believe you got one in the room right here. If you could set that up.
Oh, written on you. Perfect. Thank you.
Next agenda item, Randy Golden, amended approved PUD applicant is requesting to amend their planned unit development plan. Said property is legally described as lot BP one in the southeast quarter of northeast quarter, section fifteen, Tina ninety-three north, R fifty-six west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Hereafter referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, state of South Dakota. The E nine one one address is seven oh five Timberland Drive, Yankton, South Dakota. Randy, if you'd like to speak, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Randy Golden, RC Investments. And I'm here requesting, the last time we came through, we had this approved at one hundred and thirty units. We, from that point, we actually went to Stockwell Engineering. We had a full entire development with all the topos, all the sewer water, plumbing, electrical. It was done by another group, but we've had utilization and we've come into how we lay this out, and it just really lays out really nice at the hundred and fifty units. So we're here requesting to bump it to a total of one fifty. And I hope you have the design plans.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that right now.
Currently, the whole entire construction plan is in front of the South Dakota DNR right now for complete approval of the wastewater system as well as the water system.
Okay. Is that the picture with the full picture of the plan? If you could scroll that down a little bit. I think it might be up with the full picture. Right there. Is that the proposal right there, Randy?
Yes. Yes.
Did you put a picture of the end of the recent proposal?
Yeah, that's the one I'm trying to find to compare to. So on the original, you had the, um, water treatment, basically on the, the northeast side of the pond there? Is that where you're proposing to put the?
No, the, the complete drain fields are gonna be on the, uh, southwest corner. We have the testing done and that's the area on the property that passed the, the complete allowable test for percolation for the dosing field. So we'll be using a list station and then we'll be going over into the, of the holding facilities over here. And then it will be dosing it out in an incremental dose too. So the testing agent came down, they did all the perk tests for that large of a field and that area passed.
Okay. I'm assuming the red on the map is culverts crossing the property. Like the red Y towards the north end and the red Y is going into the pond.
Correct. There's just some discussions with the DOT and such about potentially putting a sump in that ditch right there to seasonally divert the water that would come into then the pond from all the natural spring waters coming down the road. That way to try to dry up the main highway ditch and the Timberland ditch if possible to, so we can beautify it, mow it. It's just, uh, what it is. So that, that's in the works. We've had, we had one meeting with the DOT on that, so, um, and part of the, uh, spring water facility at the street, so.
So seasonally, it would be diverted into your pond and otherwise it'd be bypassing?
Bypassing and, and coming through, yeah. You know, that whole, that whole water, that whole water issue, I think we all know, is in a contentious time. So we don't, we don't know exactly how that ends up, but the, the, the goal is that it, it comes in there when it needs to be. And I mean, there's no reasons or rhyme to, uh, divert it or turn it around unless there's some kind of a potential flood issue. But that, that decision won't get resolved legally down the road.
Randy, I might have missed it, I guess, but on your original plan here, sort of 130,
Right.
lots, what are you proposing in the?
150?
150.
Yeah. We ended up putting a few more around the pond, uh, four more units up in the front area. And we actually turned them a different direction, so it gives us more setback away from the highway. So we could end up with more trees for a blanket around that. And they also, they didn't put enough of the trees that came and wrapped around between the property owner and ourselves on the west side. So there'll be some more additional vegetation that's coming along the, the berm as we wrap around that corner on the north and west, heading towards the south.
In the original proposal, the stuff around the pond, you had, that it was like tiny homes or park models. Is that still the plan or is that more, it's gonna turn back into camper paths for?
No, I think we wanna hold that, that particular section, so around the pond, if we could put a park model, that, that would still be allowed.
So you're gonna leave it exclusively for park models slash tiny home and not allow?
No, no, it's gonna be, that was a dual mix right here in that section alone. So we'd like to leave that as what originally was approved for, a dual purpose right there. Whereas, whereas rest of the area would be more of your, your campers.
Are you, uh, I'm not sure on your picture there in the way it's drawn here, but is there just the one egress and ingress spot there or is there two on? The one's kinda white and the other one darker?
Right, there's the top section and then there's the bottom.
There's two, two entrances in there for?
The top section's not gonna be accessible from the inside of the park though?
The top section?
The top, so it'd be the northeast corner, that top section, is that going to be accessible from the roads west farther in the park?
No, not from the west side, only from Timberland.
Right, I'm just saying that none of that connects over.
Right, it doesn't flow into the down lower section, right?
So basically, the lower section has one ingress and egress and the top section has one ingress and egress?
Right, and then there is emergency, well, there's the emergency section that's clear down here on the southeast corner. It comes off Timberland right there. So that's considered a one-way, that's, that's right down there at the very lower. They didn't really draw the little lines in there, but that right there, when you turn the radius on that, that's actually where the entrance is, right off of Timberland. For, that would be for more of an emergency situation if you had to get into. So like, you know, there's a blow up going on or a fire or something in the main building, you'd be able to still get into the whole entire park off the south, uh, corner. As well as, we did leave that entrance in, but it's not showing that it's in there. But it, it is currently in there with the culverts and everything on that upper section. So that we would be able to have, um, a, you know, emergency entrance if we needed to.
Still planning on having the storage east of the main building there?
You know, that's the, that's the future idea about it. I don't think at any time are we gonna be putting that on anytime soon with the price of commodities at right now. So we, we actually are, we're waiting for the approval on this and Stockwell was running quite behind with all the projects. And now we've kind of been bit like everybody else on these commodity prices and we're, uh, our intentions is to get the project done in August. And we're currently waiting on pipe. I mean PVC pipe is, you, uh, we'll give it to you when we know. That's the answer and it's 2.5 times higher than it was 90 days ago. So that's the world we're living in. It's, it's radical, so.
Is the one square there still a pool that's gonna be fenced and screened and everything like in the original?
Yes.
Will the pond be swimmable?
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't, it would be, but I don't think we're going there.
I see.
Yeah, I think, I think that kinda opens up the whole liability issue that you probably don't wanna go down the path.
How are you gonna keep the kids out of it?
How are you gonna keep them out of it?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, you know, you're gonna be ending up, you're gonna be putting fencing around the backside of the main property line and that does a couple of things, which helps a lot of debris of agricultural products that can flow through. That helps stop that, that, because we've been seeing a lot of, oh, corn stocks and those kind of things that can come from the south out of the prevailing winds. So that can stop that, um, but you just basically have to put a fence up and, um, ultimately comes down to liability.
How deep is the pond?
It ranges anywhere from six feet to maximum of 12 feet.
Any algae problems?
No, I think there was in 2019 after we had all the algae that was built up in the highway ditches and then we had a massive rainstorm that actually pushed it into it.
Floated.
Yep. Then it came down, blocked the inlet, which then flooded the Timberland because, you know, uh, the county supervisor, they put a actual spillway protector in there and it didn't get cleaned out. So we had to go and clean it out to let the water come down, so.
So the main difference between what you're proposing for amendment to this is, um, the location of the drain field for the septic system? And then reorienting some of the spots in here to squeeze in a few more on the top side and around the pond?
Correct.
Pretty much everything else is holding the same?
Absolutely.
Oh, you said you were gonna have park models around the pond or tiny homes? Are you planning on having year-round visitors then?
No, no, I think you, they pretty much approved it and said this is not a year-round
Okay.
situation. I mean, it was, that was what it was approved in front of the commission. That they said this will not be a year-round facility, so. Essentially, zero changes, really just showing you the engineered plans, because the last time we were here, we did not have engineered plans. Wanted to show you we progress on that, that everything is put forth in front of DNR. And that we have just utilized it, laid it out to the Ts and so that it's a really professional layout.
So I'm assuming you will have a dumpster for garbage for your?
Yes. Yes.
And you'll have downcast lighting?
Yes. I, I think the goal is to make this a premier park that sets itself apart from the others. And that when you come down the hill, there's something really nice to look at. And it's well-kept and, you know, the pool features and that kind of stuff. Utilizing and trying to put, you know, as much indoor storage as things that it's, it's just a well-kept and a nice-looking facility.
So how much space is there between each of the paths?
Well,
I mean, roughly, because obviously it looks like you're fairly uniform except for where you go around the corner or something like that.
Some are a little wider than others, but the, but the minimums are, I believe, 38, 40 feet for the width between. All of them meet the minimum of South Dakota regulations. But the average size, if you look at the actual lot size, they're anywhere from 3,800 square feet up to 6,000 square feet. Which is kind of a nice size. This is a total of 36 acre site, so when you look at, you just got a 20,000 square foot building and then you got a five acre pond. It tells you, you know, you've only got 150 units spread over almost 30 acres. Versus some of the campgrounds in the area, you know, they might have 75 units in four acres. So it's very spacious.
Do you have a playground area?
Yes, that's, that's actually going to be right, um, where you see where the tree line is, right up north of the pool. It's right kind of in that whole area, so that everything's kept in line, I say if somebody's, you know, has their children playing, wanna go to the pool.
And the utilities all come off of Timberland again, or do they come off of the highway?
No, yeah, the electrical's coming off of Timberland, uh, if cable, that comes off Timberland. We're not running natural gas, but natural gas runs into the building and that comes off Timberland. We have our own well, it's actually on-site and then we're bringing it to our treatment facilities and close to the building there. Gosh, what else am I missing? We have water, we've got NRO self-contained for the dosing system, septic. So I think we're, every, everything really comes in off Timberland.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Looks like a nice question.
All right, thanks, Randy. Anybody from public wish to comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Any other discussion on the board? I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve his plan as presented pending approval from the DNR on his septic system. You know, with, with, you know, that as a condition, but that would be a condition anyways.
Yeah, I believe that was a condition on the original.
But he would need it to be approved anyway, so.
Right.
I'm just mentioning that he doesn't have it yet, quite yet.
All right, I have a motion by Schultz. A second by Michael. Roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Heavly.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, circling back, I guess, to the agenda item we moved, Jerry Minot conditional use permit.
I don't believe he's here.
Not here?
No, so.
I guess we'll strike that off the agenda, move on. We can move it, table it till next month. Make a motion, table it. Make a motion to table, okay. Motion by Barkle, second by Schultz. All in favor of tabling the conditional use permit for Jerry Minot? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next item, it's plat, plat of tract one, Reed Edition in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter. Section 10, T93 north, R55 west of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Did you see anything wrong with the plat, Gary? I'd make a motion to approve the plat as presented.
A motion by Schultz.
Second.
Second by Weiss. Ready to vote when you are.
Barkle.
Yes.
Heavly.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, last, we have a final public comment period. Anybody signed up for public comment? All right, last, we have a final public comment period, anybody signed up for public comment? All right, anybody else from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. And we are at the end of our agenda, do I have an emotional, I have a motion to adjourn by Michael, do I have a second? Second by Schultz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?